In order.
Talk to you later.
And first thing on the agenda is pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everybody. It's a nice day out there. I like to see the snow fall lightly. It's a nice snow.
Yeah, what's this guy talking about, right? It is Iowa.
These two. Third, number three on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve claims for payment.
I will second that.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Number six is Connie Harris. She is here. Right in front of you.
Wherever you're comfortable.
Where?
Whoa, anywhere.
You betcha. That's fine.
Well, interestingly enough, I know Cindy, we used to be neighbors, so...
Oh, really?
But I didn't recognize her because I don't name my work and I've forgotten everything I ever know, so... I almost said, "Speak yourself," when you mentioned that snow driving over. I was like, "Oh, this is no fun." So, I'm here because of the reorganization of victim services in the state of Iowa, and I don't know if anyone from... Has anyone from any other program ever been to visit you recently, like in the last six months or year?
Jamie.
They reorganized with Mason City.
Yeah, we're part of that.
You're part of that. Right. I can't think of her name that was here. Do you guys remember?
I can tell your maiden name.
Mary. Mary Ingham.
Barron. Jamie Barron.
Okay, so...
And then she brought her new boss. I don't remember her name.
Yeah, a lot of things have changed, yeah. So, at least you kind of know a little bit about what's going on, and I'm here to talk about the Fort Dodge program. And the Fort Dodge program now covers Harden County as well. So, it's been quite an upset, and I brought some of their flyers as well, but I'll tell you a little bit about what we do. If you'd like to look at the regional maps, you can see that Webster County Fort Dodge is actually the designated crisis shelter now for the 20 county area. And I hope I'm not being redundant. We really don't know where everyone has been and who everybody has visited with, so... But I haven't had a chance personally to meet with a lot of county boards and wanted to kind of share our personal program with you. DSO has been around for a lot of years, 20 some years, and we've always been a domestic violence shelter, but we actually served four counties no longer in our region, which was Crawford and Carroll and Pocahontas and Calhoun. So, we've moved further west and we're Region Two, and so we're now the designated crisis shelter for anyone that would need shelter from domestic violence, sexual assault, or the violent crime from Harden County. So, what that means is we can do a couple of things for those people. We can offer sometimes some crisis intervention shelter work, like maybe putting them in a hotel or motel, or finding a safe home for a few days, or actually transporting if they want to leave the area. So, it's been an interesting year, and I'm glad you're not total novices, but on the other hand, I feel like I'm telling you something you kind of already know. But how long ago were they here visiting with you?
January.
Three months ago.
Yeah.
Three months ago? Okay. So, not a lot, you know, we're still trying to kind of pick up the pieces and coordinate services, but it seems to be going really well. And you know, they have a domestic violence advocate and a sexual assault advocate here, and we work in tandem with the Mason City program. So, I like to call us sister programs. We have not seen any problem with services being interrupted at any point in time. And I think it's gone really well. I looked yesterday at pulls some stats, and we've actually had about three people since we reorganized from Harden County in our shelter. And it seems like the people we've been getting are just relocating. They're not ever coming back to their home counties because we're offering housing assistance and trying to get people in some housing programs. And we have housing specialists that are working in the 20 county area to kind of assist in helping people find houses and offering some monetary support as well, which was something we didn't do prior to the reorganization. What we're really suffering from is lack of mental health services. And I know in talking with Cindy, that's impacted your county too as far as the restructuring and reorganization of mental health services. So, our shelter covers, we have about 39 beds now, and it's actually in an old house. And right now, we have 17 children in our shelter, so much of the... Many of the victims have large families and just really are pretty down and out. So, it's... Do you have any questions you'd like to ask since this is kind of something you... Is there anything that you're not clear on as what's happening in our counties or...
I guess I have one question for you. You mentioned the restructuring of mental health. How, you said that's really affected you the wrong way. How does that... I mean, can you expand on that a little bit?
I can. About a third of our clients, at least a third if not more, those are people that come to us presenting with a mental health diagnosis or a claim to us that they are mental health... They call themselves, "I have mental problems."
Okay.
So, we actually count them, so, and we're just... We're struggling finding enough, you know, getting people into therapy and getting people... We're not, we don't have a therapist in the building. We're writing grants to try to get a therapist in our building. But it's just really impacted the, I think, the people that we're seeing that are homeless due to mental illness and in pretty violent situations. That seems to be the presenting.
You don't... How do you want to say it? That you don't... Because we've gone into a region now with 10 counties. And you don't...
To 11 now.
11 counties. And I noticed your region now over...
20 counties.
Yeah, so you're in two or three different regions of the mental health. And how does that... That just makes your job way more difficult to...
It's a challenge. It really is a challenge. And finding mental health beds, and you know, there's hardly a week goes by that we're not taking somebody to an emergency room for some sort of mental health issue or psychosomatic issue related to a mental health issue, you know, they... It's... And they have no place to send them. They just call us to pick them back up. So, yeah, I think we're all kind of... Is that sounding familiar to you?
Well, yeah, we've had our frustrations with this, and Ron Rickles here sits on that board for us, and we're consolidating, and it's...
Yeah, I think it's been a real... I think the restructuring of mental health services has been a very big change and not necessarily... I don't, I... It's been very, very hard for us to find adequate mental health services for quite a while, but I think it's certainly, you know, not getting any better. Or we do an ICN or, you know, when I worked in children's services just as recent as a few years ago, we, you know, we had to do telecommunication in order to get in mental health services. So, I think there's a lot of people on the streets and homeless that we don't recognize that are coming to, trying to get into DV shelters, which are in fact intended for that purpose, for DV and SA purposes. But we're taking a lot of people that are chronically homeless. And that's, you know, at least homeless three times in the past year or two. We're seeing tons of homeless women and children, more than we've ever seen. So, the typical client coming into a domestic violence shelter is homeless, long history of chronic homeless, mental health issues, chemical dependency issues, no birth certificates, no social security cards, sometimes undocumented. Not often, though, we don't see a ton of that, but we do occasionally get someone that's undocumented. But it's just basically, I think we're talking about a homeless population in Iowa now that we haven't experienced.
I struggle with, there's so many different entities out there that will help, but there's nobody really out there that manages the cases anymore, manages a person.
Case management piece, yeah.
And here, there's help, but it's, that all overlaps, and...
It overlaps.
And there's a lack of communication between, "How are we going to fix it?" And do you have...
I don't know how we're going to fix it. I was just, Cindy and I were talking. I've been working in human services since the late 70s, and I sure haven't... And this sounds awful, but I sure haven't seen things improve a lot, you know? But, you know, we are case managing as far as the people that come into our shelter. We are providing case management now and trying to coordinate those services and use those referral services. But you're right, I think, you know, in the past, and I really don't know if DHS is doing a lot of case management. When I worked for DHS, they had a whole unit that did case management.
Depends on what county you're in.
Yeah, I think it does too. Yeah, I really do. But they've been decimated as well, as far as the services they're providing. So, I think, you know, it's... I think we've been called upon more in the last year or two to provide those additional case management services and not just provide safety, you know, but actually try to pull somebody's life back together and get him in permanent housing and things. It's been a real struggle. But it's been, some of it's been rewarding, some of it's just, you know, very, very frustrating. So, but you're right, there's just... They say there's referral sources, but, you know... And, but, you know, and the other thing is, a lot of people still, they're not on Medicaid. They don't have insurance. They still haven't gotten any insurance. They just fall, there's a lot of people that are still falling through the cracks as far as any... I mean, they're still going to the emergency rooms.
The other issue out there is transportation for some of these...
Transportation is tough in all of our counties. We, yeah...
Services are available, but they might be in Marshalltown or... And then how do you get them there?
And you know, unless you live... I grew up in Page County on a farm, you know, and it's like, people don't realize how difficult it is to get around in Iowa if you don't have a car. I mean, if you don't have a family or if you don't have somebody. And I'm telling you, these people are isolated. They are isolated, and they're poor. So, we're doing everything we can, and, you know, I think it's, I think it's going to be up to... Maybe up to a lot of nonprofits, you know, or organizations that are going to pick up the pieces of, you know, some of the other systems that are broken down. But reorganization has been interesting because like, taking on 20 counties is kind of going to challenge for us. But nonetheless, there is somebody in every county responding to crisis calls, and there's somebody answering a crisis line for DV 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So, there's always somebody on the other line, not an answering machine, but a live voice. Never an answering machine, always somebody that can, you know, say, "We're here. What do you need?" So, that's kind of what we're trying to do, you know, for Harden County. And, you know, we do provide transportation, like, for instance, if you know, or, you know, and we all hear of these things, if you know of someone needing help, we, you know, we had a... We bought two vans this year, junky vans, but they get us where we need to go. We pick people up, we transport, you know? We just, we're just trying to fill in the gaps, so... And obviously, you know, all programs are looking for financial support. I don't know if that's something you guys have ever done. We used to get, we used to do, or we used to have quite a bit of financial support from counties that we serve, but I think that's, I think that's changed too. You know, everybody, all the county budgets are getting, you know... So, part of my, part of my visit here today is also aware, is awareness, but part of it is also, you know, wondering if you guys ever support any kind of, any kind of domestic violence programs. So... Because we are...
The state has really stepped in and taken our, almost taken our power away from us as far as they're mandating exactly what it is we give to the mental health. Before, we had, we could discretionaryally put it into places where we want. Now, we have to send it to this 11 county...
Region.
Region, and then they make the decision on what's going on. So, I mean, speaking to these regions is probably going to be your next thing that you'll be doing.
Trying to get some money back into these really... I mean, these are the neediest of the needy, you know? There is absolute, I don't even know how to describe. I mean, yeah, and this is just an example, and it's, tell me to, you know, move any, move on to the next person. But Monday, somebody from Waterloo pulled up in front of our building with their car kind of, or van kind of full of clothes, four kids and a dog, and somebody had sent them to our shelter. And we were full. We already had 17 kids in the building. So, and you know, they're kind of hearing, people are kind of beginning to hear where these little hubs are that might help, and they're coming from all over. It's just amazing. And Chicago seems to be this little route through here. From Chicago seems to be kind of a little interesting.
This makes it a little messy also, but decategorization, DECAT group and funding through DECAT, they have their regions too, and none of the regions match up with your region. You overlap. But there's money available through...
Yeah, and we work closely with DECAT. Unfortunately, linking families is our DECAT organization in Fort Dodge. And I manage, I'm still on their board, so they don't fund us, but they do do a lot of scholarships for daycare and that sort of thing. But they, yeah.
There's other overlapping DECATs, you know, there's one in Marshalltown.
Is our hub for DECAT funds. It was Ames and went, and, you know...
You're assigned to a certain hub?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay. That's interesting.
Yeah, yeah, we have to follow the DHS kind of regional kind of thing. So, when it was Ames, you know, I had worked with a lot of their, they called them Haasas, but, you know, and now it's gone to Waterloo, and they don't know us. They don't know the work we do, you know? So, I mean, you try to get your face in front of people, but it's getting a little more difficult, so...
Because a lot of that money goes to awareness and not to the families. That just drives me crazy, you know? You know, so we can be aware forever, but until you actually help people, it's, you're not serving the people of the county.
And you know, the people that, the people that need it, I mean, they have, they have nothing. I mean, they're, they're not... They don't make $5,000 a year. They make zero. And most of these women have no income unless they're with somebody, and even then, they don't, so... It's an interesting thing that's happened, but...
You have some flyers on there?
I do. I brought some from CIS, but I also brought some crisis, this, we're called the Crisis Based Shelter. But, that being said, we're doing a lot of housing work too. The whole issue is trying to get somebody back into a place where they can live and be safe and somehow manage on their own. And that's kind of our goal with our shelter. So, I'll leave these here for you, and I'll leave these here as well. You may already have these.
Yeah, I do.
I'll leave them anyway, because I always like to kind of talk about both of our programs. So, and I can also leave some regional maps for you, and I think that's...
Well, thank you.
About all I can tell about my story.
Yeah, thanks, Connie.
But I appreciate you letting me come. Who's Lance?
I'm Lance.
You're Lance? Okay, thanks for communicating and getting me here, so... Cindy, good to see you.
Well, we can move on to the next one, Recorder's Monthly Report.
Make a motion to accept the Recorder's Report. We have it in front of us.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Law enforcement contracts, 2080 agreements. And we have to go over each one individually, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And they are with the City of Union, City of Witten, City of Steamboat, City of Radcliffe, City of Hubbard, City of Alden.
Six. Yep. I'll make a motion to approve the law enforcement contract. 2080s with Union, Witten, Steamboat Rock, Radcliffe, Hubbard, and Alden.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor? It's a roll call, right?
It's Ron.
Aye.
Brian.
Aye.
Lance.
Aye. Motion carries. Appointment to zoning adjustment board. That was that one with Annette Sweeney, correct?
Yeah.
Make a motion to appoint Annette Sweeney to our zoning and adjustment board and thank her for volunteering for that.
Yeah, she'll be good. Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permit, Secretary Rhodes.
We do not have any utility permits at this time. And we're just hoping that the snow stays away, contrary to some of you.
I like light snow in the warm weather. What is it, 30 degrees warmer than yesterday or 40?
Got to make sure our snow equipment works, don't we? You know, we've been out a lot this year for not much snow.
Yes.
Because it just keeps, just gives us a little, and then it blows across the road and...
So light?
Yep. Yeah, for no more than snow, we have, we've got a lot of miles logged already.
Yes, yes, we do.
I'm going to roll it right into you. You got three, two more items.
I gave you a packet there, and I put it in the wrong order, sorry, but the last pages are the architectural services. Chris Cummings, architect with Turnkey Associates, came and visited with Conservation, and he stopped by. There's been mention of possibly the engineer's office moving down to our shop in that building and remodeling it. So, he put together a rough layout, and he didn't put that cost in there, but I visited with him, and he thought it'd be probably minimum $200,000 to move us. Now, a couple of things that, that I, one of the things that I'd like to see that was not here, was since that's already gravel, we could easily put a basement in with our crews. We have no real storm shelter down there at our yard right now. Go hide in the bathroom. It truly isn't that well protected. And so, but in essence, that would just be materials, and we have quite a few steel I-beams in our yard that we could use. So, I don't see that being too much more of a cost to do something like that. And, you know, we can do all the grading and the flat work inside. So, how much that would reduce costs, I don't know. So, I guess it's up to you guys. You want to see him move forward and bring a proposal for architectural services for doing this? Is this, you know, we'd be looking large chunk of money, $200,000?
I guess for me, I guess right now I'm in the idea stage of different things. I know we've got, each one of us have different ideas, and we're all pursuing different ideas. So, I would hate to spend too much mind on this at this point. From my aspect, you got us to a point that we know what this would look like on this proposal, and we need to check into any other ideas that we have. Two, I mean, I...
I agree with you, Brian.
On that. So, I think what you've gotten us is really good information for us. Now, we know what's going on, so...
No, I wouldn't be looking forward to it anymore at this time, point.
That's very, you know, I hear the talk, and so I just...
It takes enough, it takes a number to see reality, but, you know, that could have came in at $30,000, you have no clue.
I'll just even look in this as spurts my ideas of, I hadn't even thought of it. So, it's just, yeah, it's a very good starting point.
Okay. So, we'll just put that on the back burner then.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then, rocking gravel quotes, I just want to present that to you. You know, after looking hard in the budget and evaluating stuff, we really put a lot of roadstone on our roads recently, and it's $3 a ton more than gravel. We've used all of our gravel except for, we do have some at the H&amp;M pit. We purchased that through Martin Marietta. Becker gravel for Stratford, Chuck Becker and his daughter. Gave me some prices for tonnages at the Beach Pit, which is just across the border into Marshall County. And then at the Grimble Pit, which is up by the Green Belt by Eagle City. And we just finished a pile there. We'd like to see something maybe down in the southwest part of the county, but they're just... There used to be a lot of gravel pits, but they're closed up. You know, they're just not... So, really, the only active pits right now are the H&amp;M, Gifford can produce. I know that there was a look around Gifford, a possibility. But that location, that's a Level B road going to that, and there's a posted bridge, so that would incur some cost to bring up. So... And I did it on a two-year deal. Go pay a half due this July, and then I said, "Because of cash flow and carryover, October of 2015." And in essence, ordered enough for two years. What we think we need for two years. I think in the past, I don't know that this stuff's ever been brought before you, or, you know, we usually just sign the rock when we need it. But I thought I'd bring it here. So, you can see we're...
Sounds good.
Trying to.
Do we need to...
Well, in, we're kind of getting away from that quarter of a county a year situation.
Right.
This $40,000 ton is about what gets put on for that quarter county a year. But we're hoping that we can use the roadstone. And visiting with the Beckers and stuff, we're going to try some different mixtures, you know? Adding a little clay here and there. So, they'll, when they strip off the black dirt, then there's usually the clay that they'll strip. And then we might keep some of that to try to, we're going to try some test areas. See if we can't get the stuff to stay tighter and last longer.
I think that's the biggest complaint that probably I hear out there from rural people is when we go out there, when the roads are really dry, and we just dump the extensive roadstone on top and just sits right on top because it's so dry, we can't get it pushed into the gravel road. You know, the cars going down the road, and our road graders all toss it into the ditch. And, you know, we need a better mixture on that road to get it more of a tighter. So, I think you're really looking at some good things there to...
It's going to take quite a while, you know?
Yep.
Got 777 miles of gravel road, so...
Yep.
But you need to start somewhere, you know? One of the other things we're also looking at too is, I don't know if, it was on the news last week, but the TOT has been using it, but it's a beet byproduct, beet juice. And they've been mixing it with their calcium brine solution. And it helps keep that brine on the... And it helps keep that brine on the road longer. It'll stay up to seven days, kind of sticky. And it reduces the corrosivity of the salt. And so I'm going to have, get ahold of it, they're out of Knoxville. Have them come up and we're going to try a couple of the routes, you know, not do everybody, but just a couple of the routes with this solution in our brine.
Is it cost effective, if it works?
Yeah. You know, I mean, and it really reduce, it lowers the freezing point of the brine solution to.
Even farther down than what it already is.
Yeah. I mean, if you notice some of these DOT roads, how they melt, you know, they're melting a lot faster than ours.
Because of the mixture.
From my understanding, the DOT is using it, I think they're using it in West Des Moines. It was on News Channel 8, it was a nice.
So that should in turn let you use less salt and sand?
Well, once the material's on there, it'll stay on there in residual. And if it snows again, it won't pack in, it'll go ahead and keep it melting off.
Unless it's 20 below.
Well, it takes it down to, I think, I better not say for sure, because I can't.
That'd be a big jump from what the brine usually takes it down to. I mean, it would, but hopefully we don't have a 20 below again.
There we are.
Don't look at me that way.
It's coming.
Hopefully next year, next year.
But the other thing too is, is if that material stays on, you know, and we don't have to go out and spray again, sand again.
Yeah, that's where you're safe.
Well, it depends on the frequency of the snows and the blowing.
Right.
You know, it's not going to stay on forever, but if you have a couple of events that are probably close together.
It has its places, so. But when I, hopefully we can have that individual come up, if any of you are interested, come out and listen to their spiel. It's pretty, pretty interesting. I mean, it's a natural product and really, I know, especially around the Greenbelt, you know, that new river bridge, the Isle River Bridge, it has its own pond area where it takes the melt.
You're talking about 20 now, Highway 20. When they were building it, I went down there and looked at it. Yeah, it saves it from flowing directly into the river stored in that pool.
That may be something that helps us and plus helps the environment at the same time. It's a natural byproduct. And somebody in Iowa has it.
I like your initiative of going out there and looking at new ways and trying to get more for the dollar.
Well, I noticed that the dollars are disappearing, so I don't like talking to you guys.
It's Jessica.
Oh, blaming on her now.
Did you need anything on these quotes or just?
I'm just, per your information, unless you have a problem with me signing them.
Nope.
Moving forward.
Anything else for us, Earl?
Went and saw the Volvo's in the body shop. So probably looking another four weeks before we get it.
Both cats are on the road.
Both the cats are on the road. Marty didn't even want to leave and go get lunch, he was afraid some.
Any other business? Carry none, I can go to number 14, ask for adjournment.
So I'm over.
Second.
It's been moved in second, any discussion? Carry none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're done.